Good morning and welcome. To November sixth, regular session of Commissioners Court. Please rise. Oh, we got a full quorum. Here, you certified the meeting was properly posted. Please rise for prayer and pledges. James Ray?
Our Father, we humbly bow before you this morning. Asking for your presence in this courtroom. May guard these gentlemen in the direction that you have them go. Father, may your grace fall upon this court. May you be in charge. May we allow you to be in charge. Other verse today is Colossians four six. Does let your speech be always the grace season whistle. That you may know how you ought to answer every name. Father, give us the wisdom that we need to make decisions. Father, give us the. Courage to speak when we ought to speak and to keep quiet when we ought to keep quiet and to know. Father, we ask Lord that you guard us and direct us this morning. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Praise the Lord. The United States of America and through the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God and in its soul with liberty and justice. Under the Texas law. For the citizens of Texas, one nation under God and in its.
I didn't receive any citizens input. We got any? Consent agenda contains nine items.
Nothing to pull. I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Second.
Moving seconded all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Set your agenda Sheriff's Office number ten. Discuss and take action on the Sheriff's Office fifty-nine annual report. Chief, what I got?
Like this Alan and they're all preparing for board as always. Appreciate it. All review of the. That's the sort of the report.
Looks good, chief. My motion to approve.
Moving seconded all in favor.
Thank you.
Number eleven, discuss and approve order twenty twenty-four dash one seven. Amending the budget for fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Ms. Allen?
The budget amendment was moving some of the. Carry forward forward into this year's budget. We left between a hundred and a hundred and fifty thousand. Precincts one, two, and three precincts four. We left a little more still pending some of the GLO. Approvals and whatever. So we'll. Wait till we're sure all the invoices have come in. And then we'll.
Sounds good, Trish. Thank you.
I make the motion to approve agenda item eleven as presented.
Moving seconded all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Number twelve, discuss and take action to approve the prepayment of postage budgeted and centralized postage account. For the twenty twenty-three mass mail out of voter registration certificates as required by the Texas Election Code. Fourteen point zero zero one and fourteen point zero zero two.
Diana asked me to present this. A vendor that we deal with to handle these cards has requested this year a prepayment of postage.
Okay. Just official, all of our postage is together now, right? So you're you're okay with the prepayment?
Trish?
I have no problem.
I'll make a motion. We accept number twelve, awarding it to eight. Well, I guess it's already a eight and the second.
You're saying it all in favor, raise your hand.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number thirteen, discuss and take action on placing IT department underneath Commissioners Court.
Yeah, I put this on here. The the IT department actually works for the court. And I don't know how it would usually transpired to be under just strictly the judge. But unless there's something statutorily, which I don't think there is. EMS is under the court, IT is under the court, Andy's office is under the court. I'm missing anybody? Maintenance is under the court. So basically, it's just kind of lining up with where they're supposed to be.
I think what it came on board is a is a one person department. They needed a boss, so they put him under the judge, but now it's three. And. I'll second your motion.
Is that kind of how we got there, Mr. Trish?
I don't know how we got there.
It honestly just quite evolved as, as should all get said, when IT first started, it was a. A one person department and then of course, as all IT has grown. It's grown and it just kind of evolved under the court.
I'll make the motion now to, she's already given me a second.
And I'll second your motion.
Man, how you feel about that?
I'm just wanting to do the best job we can for the county and make sure. Now there there's no issues with, oh, you perform or if there's any other changes.
Yeah, I mean, nothing's going to change. You can still go to the judge for day to day things that you need or whatever, but as far as the rest of the departments are under us also. And that's where it belongs is underneath the Commissioners Court.
Yeah, moving. Moving seconded all in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Motion passes. Fourteen. Discuss and take action to purchase a four-ten P tier backhoe loader through. Sourcewell contracts number G three-two-one-one-nine. Dash JDC or any other group purchase organization agreement.
Yeah, I'll tell you, I have not talked to Cheryl yet about this purchase, but I mean, we are gonna. Move forward with looking at purchasing a backhoe. Uh, we've got a couple of quotes. They are old. It may not be good. I probably need to redo the quotes. But I need the blessing of the court that it's okay to do it or we're not gonna move forward because we have the court blessing anyway. And I do have the budgeted funds to pay for it. And at this point between the two of them, if that, if it's still good, we're we're looking at going with the John Deere. Under that cooperative agreement that's uh, Sourcewell contract. Number G three-two-one-one-nine dash JDC. And I'll have to verify that this price is still good.
Yeah.
And who has been expired for a while, but yeah. But that don't mean it's gone up. Sure you're not. And I mean, we have not no inflation in the last few months, right? But I mean, it's locked in under contract anyway, as long as the contract hasn't pretty well gone up.
So this like byboard stuff?
Yes, very similar byboard.
Yeah. A lot of them actually prefer Sourcewell over.
And and if you look, I mean, Caterpillar is very close to it. I mean, the price is very competitive.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anyway, I make a motion to allow me to move forward with buying a backhoe. With the prescriptions that we have here on board and I got funds to pay for it.
Moving seconded all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Fifteen, discuss and take action on authorizing the insurance of a check. To Huntsville Toyota to advance of delivery in advance of delivery in the amount of forty-six thousand, one sixty-one. And seventy-four cents for the purchase of a pickup truck to be paid from the budgeted funds.
This is the truck we talked about at the last. Court, we found it here at Huntsville Toyota. Um, all the paperwork's done. They're just waiting on me to show up with a check and give it to them and then they'll sign the title and stuff over. And we can pick the truck up. So I'll have the check in my left hand and once everything's right, we get the title and paperwork. I give them the check and we bring the truck back. So.
That's your most?
That's my motion is to approve the pre-author.
Moving seconded all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Sixteen, discuss and take action on authorizing. The issuance of a check to Diamond Cave Equipment in advance of delivery in the amount of thirty-nine thousand for the purchase of a sheepfoot roller. To be paid from. They have paid for from budgeted funds.
Same story here. We did a bill of sale with this guy. He's got it. We have it signed. Uh, he has his signed, so it'd be something. Just give me a check I can take with me to give him. For the equipment, he'll give me the signed bill of sale and we'll bring it back. So that's my motion to approve agenda.
Where's he at, Bill? Down in the cave?
He's in Cleveland. Wayne Wayne Stovall.
Okay, yeah, I know he does. I'll give him a second.
Moving seconded all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Seventeen, discuss transferring recent purchase sheet foot roller from precinct three to Roden Bridge General and reimburse the purchase price precinct three.
Now there's, now that it's, now that it's, now that it's one minute old, see about unloading it. No, I just, I just, I put this in for conversation because we don't have a, we don't have a roller in in Roden Bridge General. I'm happy to take it in precinct three and just have it as mine. That's fine, but putting it in Roden Bridge would make it. More available to everybody if it has maintenance problems or whatever, rather than if somebody using it and it break on them and come out of their budget, a hose, whatever, it would be Roden Bridge General. So. If y'all are interested in it, we'll put it in Roden Bridge General and if you're not, I'll keep it in precinct three.
I'm not.
Okay.
I'm not.
Alright, so we just, we're just.
So I could borrow it either place it is, but.
Yep.
Well, and and yeah, I mean. You know, y'all know as well as, I mean, we've all got rollers and and uh. Yeah, and y'all are more welcome to them as long as you take care of them. I don't have.
Yeah, that's fine. I just put out the discussion, so we'll just take, just take no action on that.
Okay. Action on seventeen, eighteen, discuss status of the Highland Creek Bridge project.
I um, sat at the um, reconstruction conference last week. Hitten Bridge project. Um, it's in the Acorn Hill subdivision. Will start December the sixth. It's a hundred and twenty day project to take care of the last. Junkie bridge in precinct three. Um, turned out to be a nine hundred thousand dollar bridge that.
Are you kidding?
That Tech dot is going to build for us. So that's a huge benefit to Walker County taxpayers because it was going to have to be replaced. Because it's got a little bit of a, little bit of that to it. So had to be replaced. They're taking care of it for us. We have a. A little culvert that we're going to replace on Wood Farm Road for our match. But I'm looking forward to the that getting started. And um, this was a bridge on a one way in, one way out road, got about thirty houses behind it over Harmon Creek.
This is one of the very bad.
Mm-hmm, yeah. And it's rickety and bad. So this, I just wanted to bring that, that some, that's that's a little bit of good news for us. Um, nine hundred grand is a, is a huge catch for us.
Nineteen, discuss and take action on granting exemption on paying sales tax added to. SD truck spring invoice online or paid when by with by credit card.
We had, there's, there's actually two of these items. This one here is a set of um, front. Wheel springs for one of my dump trucks that we hunted. Like crazy to find, ended up flying them from SD truck springs with a credit card. Um, we sent them all the paperwork for the refund. Uh, or the non-payment of sales tax and they assured us it would not be on there. We got the bill, so payment with with sales taxes included. Lucy has been wearing them out, trying to get a hold of them. I'm not even sure they're even in business anymore. We called the credit card company and said, hey, can we protest this? And like, we don't do sales tax protests, so you're on your own. So it's like eighty bucks.
Eighty-six.
Eighty-six sixty. So rather than keep investing time, effort, and energy already six bucks, um, it is. Required that I come to court and ask for an exemption and go and just pay the eighty-six bucks. It'll come out of my budget and just close this out and get it off the books. So that's my motion to approve agenda item number nineteen.
I'll give you a second.
We, I already know the answer. We've never done this before, I would assume.
The the policy has been that the employee, if they get charged credit card and uh, does not get returned, they reimburse the county.
And I have never agreed with that.
I don't think that's right at all. We did everything we.
Done everything they could do and they still can't get it back. I'm just gonna agree with that.
Yeah.
In most cases, there is an option to purchase from a vendor that will not charge credit card. And and it's highly unusual that when they tell you they uh, to send a credit, I mean, a tax exempt form. Um, and they uh. And they don't accept it. That that's unusual. And what we see quite frankly is uh, and. Not Commissioner, uh, don't get, I'm not speaking about this. But on most every sales tax charge we get. It is the same people using the same vendor, knowing they're going to get charged sales tax. And so, um, and uh, we have unusual, this is an unusual circumstances numerous against have been made. Uh, and and they're not respond. So uh, the other one that I don't know, they're still in business. I don't know if every attempt that could be made, if y'all completed that. But this particular one, um. They're not even acknowledging that they're still in business.
Yeah, we can't even find them.
I just worry about the can of worms. We're opening up on this, but maybe this one. The. I ain't gonna say okay. I don't like this. I mean, we all at some point in time.
Well, if.
If if you can't find them, I guess.
And if we had. If we hadn't sent them the form and if Lucy hadn't been wearing them out, I wouldn't be here. We'd have wrote the check, but we have flat wore these people out trying to find them and they just flat out are not there. So.
What are they out of, Bill?
This one came out of like Pennsylvania or Tennessee. It was a, just a, a, a sales guy on the telephone. And um, he was super helpful and then um.
Just like, like, it's like some of these part places that you chase and hunt used parts, I guess, or.
These are brand new. This was a great guy, but I'm sure he was like a middleman kind of a guy. You know, where he could go over here and get them or whatever, because he was on place and they shipped from someplace else and. He was like, oh yeah, we'll take care of the tax. Just send us the form and then everything was cool. Then the bill showed up. We're like, well, look at here. And then trying to get a hold of him, nothing.
Anyway, you got a motion and a second.
See what we got.
Yeah, no. Motion second all in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Motion passes.
Yeah.
I don't know. I'd go either way.
That's fine. That's fine.
I guess I was a little late raising my hand. He got what he wanted to do.
Yeah. Twenty-one, discuss and take action on Walker County Labor Standards Officer.
Nope, nope, twenty. Let's do twenty.
I'm sorry. Discuss and take action on granting exemption on paying sales tax added to tractor supply. Online order paid with by credit card.
This one's different because they are still in business and we are still calling. And they just like. We don't care. You know, um.
Well, then we don't care enough to do business with them anymore.
That's kind of what I'm thinking, you know, but.
Another supplier.
But we, we, you know, we buy quite a bit of stuff from them and um, so it was kind of unusual. So. We, we can keep trying on this one if we want. It was just such a small amount. This one was how much sixteen dollars, something like that. Thirteen ninety-nine, or we can pay this one if y'all don't want to.
Oh, that's.
Yeah, twenty-eight, twenty. I thought it was twenty-eight something dollars like that. Not a huge one. They're still in business. I was very, this one was, we were more disappointed in than anything because um. Like I said, Lucy calls them twice a week. And hey, can you put me over here? Oh, well, you just follow this over and just kind of this big circle thing and just. Nothing on that there. So, um. I'll make the motion to approve a twenty as presented. Works out, it works out. If not. We'll keep banging on them and.
I'll give you a second, but keep banging on.
Yeah.
Don't let up on.
Moving seconded all in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Three to two. Motion carries. Twenty-one, discuss and take action on Walker County Labor Standards Officer Oversight Procedures Related to Community. Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery CDBG. Dash DR Project, General Land Office, TLO, State Contract Number twenty dash zero six two dash one oh four dash C two seven nine. This is that grant that we had. On precinct one and two with the error on. Knife River.
Right.
But keeping that mean you had the.
Right.
We wrote the letter, sent it to them.
Okay.
They're finally closing the project out. I don't know if Jordan's online. She online?
I do not see her now.
Okay, uh, they went back and accepted the labor standards that were brought to court. The last time I accepted, they're gonna accept those this time and we'll put it back in the minutes. And they're gonna close the whole ground. So this has been a. Seven, eight months process on arguing on this one. Thing. We finally, we've had meetings with everybody from the top down over there. So. That's my motion. Moving seconded all in favor, raise your hand.
Wouldn't just a few hundred dollars too, right?
It was like twenty-six dollars.
Yeah, yeah, for like, so we had eight thousand dollars worth of time and effort and.
Oh, yeah, way more than that.
Yeah.
Um.
Alright, good deal.
Twenty-two, discuss and take action on nomination to the Walker County Appraisal District Board of Directors by voting. Entitlement and Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one six.
My um. Motion is going to be just to spread our votes out equally amongst the candidates.
I'll second that, yeah. Look back the same board we've always had.
Divided even, it's the exact same board and our votes don't count anyways, so.
School district.
The school district, I vote everybody and they control it.
Yeah, so these are the only candidates anyway.
It doesn't divide out evenly, so one person is gonna get.
Two eighty-eight.
Two eighty-eight.
That's my motion.
Yeah.
I got seconded then.
You did. Moving the seconded, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Forty-three, family and development. Public hearing concerning plat number twenty twenty-three dash zero four nine. Replat of lots thirty and thirty-one, block five and lots seventy and seventy-one, block four of the Deer Force subdivision. Jose Marina de la Garza Survey A twenty-two Coyote Run. Purge Trail. Time is nine twenty.
The public hearing section of the plat. Correct some um. Replat some lots at the end of discovery run. This is the cul-de-sac. Out this way. Um, they set the cul-de-sac back off the property line. Here it was originally. Adjacent to the property line. They they reshaped. These two lots, this property line from the dotted boundary. Buying these lots. Full lot there. The uh, when we get into the other items, we'll talk about this, but. This, this is the cul-de-sac here. This section of road, uh, they've got another uh, variance request. They got the branch request here. Do not construct this section of road to. The full standard, it's sort of, they're trying to leave an opening for the existing road. And provide a public right of way up to the property line, but. I think the presumption is at some point when Brandon comes back to Dr. To probably stop the option at the cul-de-sac. Um, but anyway, just to clear that up for you, the old plat showed. Cul-de-sac budding the property line, but for a number of reasons, it was decided. To move the construction or replating to make sure it's inside.
But the public access will be for the people that live past that, be able to get through there, right?
Yeah, the 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 right of way is being dedicated. It's just that the construction stops here. Yeah, it's essentially.
Okay.
Any other public comments?
All right, this is just a pullback of the cul-de-sac from Commissioner. They won't step in this, you know, or he he can verify. We just pulled the deal back because there's landowners at the end. There's an existing Coyote Run. We paved off of this cul-de-sac down to Coyote Run. We actually paved it all the way into theirs, right to the property line and Commissioner White, you seen that? People's house. And they were giving us a little bit of trouble, so we.
Yeah, it just gives us a bumper. It gives us.
Yeah, a little buffer.
It all worked out a lot better by moving it than. The the grief upon the other landowners and it's just worked out better than.
And we still own all those lots. It doesn't affect any lot owners. They they're not for sale or anything. We just readjusted the road and the right of way to. Or we get a little less grief from existing, you know, adjacent landowners, what we're doing.
As well as building that road out, like what Andy was talking about. They, they were. Not for most of this anyways, but they didn't win and they've got a little road that goes through there. We just. Need to protect them with an easement that's coming up next. Basically where everybody's going to be, so.
Okay. Any other comments? Time is nine twenty-three. Vote grain is closed. Number twenty-four, discuss and take action on Republic Grand Ranch LLC request for variance to section B four, lot one-one. Two and table B four point one of the Walker County subdivision regulations regarding minimum road design standards for plat number twenty twenty-three dash zero four nine. Replat of lots thirty, thirty-one, block five and lots seventy, seventy-one, block four of the Deer Force subdivision. Jose Marina de la Garza Survey A dash twenty-two dash Coyote Run Courage Trail.
So the variance request is um, that the section of road, the section of right of way between the cul-de-sac and this property line here. If that section of road would not have to conform to the minimal road cross section that's in the subdivision regulation. This was provided as an access. The cul-de-sac is being built to standard tier. The the request is that this small section between the cul-de-sac and this property line be allowed. Uh, to not conform to our minimum. Uh, road standard.
It'll just kind of basically ties back into the type of road that's already existing.
And it's, yeah.
Is it paved at all? Is it gonna be paved at all?
They did. They they did. It's just, it's just not there. Yeah, it just doesn't meet the call sections.
And it's still gonna be public.
But yes, I would say it's definitely. Public, but not county maintained.
It was basically a little logging road that goes down. There's probably twelve, maybe fifteen little light through there. And when we come off of the cul-de-sac. We just went paved and just paved down and necked it down to there with the road and we stopped it at the property line. We actually went a few feet past the property line.
Okay.
But it just necks it down. There's no way to build a, a county wide. Dead into a property line because there's not even, they don't, they don't have easement.
Yeah, they don't, they don't want it that way.
They're like sixty. They don't want it.
There's no way to do it.
Alright, thank you.
Motion from twenty-four is presented.
Moved and sec.
I would just add, as with all variances. Variants will expire after ninety days. The plat is not filed.
That contingent.
Okay, so.
And since that the variance expires.
That's on every variance. It's always gonna put that line on it. But that should be. On your time. Which is about any days.
Yeah. Okay, so add that to my motion.
Variance expires if the plat's not filed within ninety days.
Okay.
That's my motion.
That's good. I moved in seconded all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Number twenty-five, discuss and take action on plat number twenty twenty-three dash zero four nine. Replat, replatz of lots thirty, thirty-one, block five and lots seventy and seventy-one, block four of the Deer Force subdivision. Jose Marina de la Garza Survey A dash twenty-two Coyote Run Courage Trail.
So you have in your um, packet a list of comments on the plat. The only you, that's a new request. Of all those comments being with plat. That the plat be filed within ninety days. A letter from Wild Day, it's like October thirtieth.
And why don't you just notations on the plat, something like that.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
My motion being approved, number twenty-five, contingent upon the flats recorded within.
Yeah, and you've already given one of those notes with the variance that was previously granted.
I'll second.
Okay. Moving, saying it all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Twenty-six. Discuss and take action on acceptance of bond for Deer Force Subdivision guaranteeing the improvements constructed entitled maintenance bond. Bond number zero seven nine eight two eight six M.
This is the maintenance bond submitted um, to move forward to. Uh, um, the twelve-month period of maintenance. The bond has been submitted to us, this is a copy of it here. Um, the engineers have checked the amounts, it's fifteen percent of the original. This is a necessity to move forward into substantial completion that we have this in place. Yeah, substantial completion is our next item.
Motion to approve number twenty-six, ask for.
Second.
Moving, seconded all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Twenty-seven, discuss and take action on the certification of streets and roads to be in compliance. With the Walker County subdivision regulations for Great Force subdivision, order number twenty twenty-four dash one two.
Alright. Give you a couple documents here. First, I can use. It's a, it's a response to. Uh, plus review of this. Second. While, it's a response to the response.
You put it in a bucket.
Yeah.
Yeah. As you can see, uh, there's some. Uh, items that are, that are left in the punch list. Uh, and. You go through the comments. Developers, believe they. Bond involves all those within the. In the twelve-month maintenance period, um. I'll defer to Commissioner Becker on. You know, it's beyond about what's left on the list, but we have the responses from while. That that address all those, um. We, our, our recommendation would be a substantial completion. Was approved today, was approved intention upon items on the wild. Uh, response dated November third, being met within a, within a ten-month period. Which gives us a little buffer on the. Bond that you guys.
So, the developers, Jacob and I went up there Friday, we we looked at all these and the. When you start talking about the dirt stockpile. You're gonna put a cement fence around both of those. Obviously, this time of year with the uh. Weather the way it is, we need to get into spring before we start. Doing fixing some of these, just because we need to get grass growing and established, uh. Uh, but all, like these uh. Ditches, the the culverts on the ponds that are washed. Will be cleaned out and addressed in the spring when we get grass, because there's no point in. Fixing it now, then it rains again. You know, continually continuing on, so. Um. On the second page, uh. The slopes on the, on the seed, uh, one to six for the uh. That's the way the lady out and. And Jerry, uh, the the ones that were above the one to three. Gonna regrade to match, uh, one to three that down here that. Ranches in state, uh, it's not. Engineer. I don't have a problem with everything that we went over, um. On that regressing those couple of that way, the rest of them are fine, I don't have no problem with it. Uh, I'd like to be filled on this.
Yeah.
Your motion.
That would be my motion.
One additional item, uh, just for. Housekeeping, the two certification letters were submitted by the developer and the engineer. I referenced this Deer Force Section one, Section two, just wanna get them to update those to just say Deer Force subdivision. Uh, that's, that's the recorded name on the plat, that matches all the other paperwork, and so. That's something that I think would be pretty simple for us to get, I would just like to add that to the list.
Okay, but basically we're just saying, in ten months, we'll do another, do another punch list, it'll all be addressed, so.
Yeah, we'll do the final one in ten months.
Which we normally do.
You give me a second, Bill.
I will. You made, if you made your motion.
I made my motion.
You get over there, Jerry, with the motion. I'll, I'll second.
Moving, seconded all in favor, raise your hand. Nothing carries. Twenty-eight. Discuss and take action on the release of performance bond, bond number zero seven nine eight two eight six. Dated May seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, related to Deer Force subdivision.
So the court just approved. Reaching public substantial completion, it's typical to release the existing construction bond, we have the maintenance bond that's been submitted. This allows, uh, before taking this action allows us to release the original back.
And that's my motion.
Second.
Moving, seconded all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Twenty-nine, public game concerning plat number twenty twenty-three dash zero three nine. Replat of lots fifty-four, block five of the Harmon Creek Ranchette subdivision, James Dean survey, A dash one five nine, Park Lane. Precinct three, time is nine thirty-three.
Um. The variant request is. There's two, but that. Our typical is to set the property line back. At the edge of the right of way, they requested to be allowed to dedicate. That five foot, that last five foot. By easement inside the property now, that's essentially the, the, those are the two.
Yeah.
Variants is that are for you.
Anybody else? That's nine thirty-four, vote game is closed. Number thirty, discuss and take action on Dan McCain's. Request for advance to section B two point two of the Walker County subdivision regulations regarding lot depth to width. For plat number. Twenty twenty-three dash zero three nine replat of lot fifty-four, block five of the Harmon Creek Ranchettes subdivision, James Dean survey. Eight dash one five nine.
This is the variant on depth to width.
Andy, how far off are they?
Um. So.
Good read.
On this one, it's about, it's it's just over seventy-seven foot at the road. And it's uh, four hundred and seventy-three feet, the. It might be thirteen. Um, so it's, it's, it's about a one to five, maybe, well, maybe one to six. The reason that we put this before the court is, you know, we have a flag lot standard, it's a fifty-foot. Uh, right of way. This is. Sort of, you know, in the gray area on, or not, it could be considered a flag lot or not. Um, our minimum frontage is eighty feet, is is eighty foot absolute. And one twenty-five on a rule. Um, they're not making that here or here, they're making it here. Um, but the question is, could these be considered as flags? I thought that was. Probably a better thing for the court to look at than, than me. If they were flag lots, there is no. Um, they would be in much better shape as far as the depth of width goes, but. If we consider them as normal lot, they would need this right.
Yeah, they're, they're already, they're already built out, they got a house on one, got a shop on another. And I wanna say a little, little shop on the third one, and um. They are, and it's not, it's not great. But there's other tracks in there that are similar to that, so.
What about the pond, is that gonna create a problem?
It it'll be, it's right on the property line, that'd be up to them guys to work out. To the property owner, I mean, it's not up to me, if they wanna cut him with my.
It's free to bask it.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, if you, if you cut it up and they have a problem, that's a civil thing back and forth.
That would fill it up.
Makes it simple.
Where's the dam at? They got a tight dam on it?
No, it's a hole in the ground. It's just kind of a hole in the ground.
Out there, it can't be.
Can't be too deep at all, right?
It's a rock anyway, right?
Not much there, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so, I mean, I'll make the motion to approve the agenda number thirty. As presented.
Any access back with a boat?
Yeah. I'll second.
Moving, saying it all in favor, raise your hand, motion carries. Thirty-one. Discuss and take action on Darren McLean's request for advance to section four point two three of the Walker County subdivision regu- regulations. Regarding right of way lines. Plat number twenty twenty-three dash zero three nine replat of lots fifty-four, block five of the Harmon Creek Ranchette subdivision, James Dean survey, A dash one five nine.
So this is the second of the two variants, this is the one I was talking about, about the dedicating by inside the boundary line to outside the boundary line.
And we, we've done that before, I know we did that on nine eighty, that they've already got it all. Surveyed and everything that this. Whether they missed it or didn't know or whatever came up. Letting them put the easement inside the property still gives us what we're looking for, and they don't have to go back and re survey the entire project. Or properties and back all the property lines up, so. Um, I'll make the motion to approve. Thirty-one or two?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one, as presented.
Moving, saying it all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thirty-two, discuss and take action on plat number twenty twenty-three. Dash zero three nine replat of lots fifty-four, block five of the Harmon Creek Ranchette subdivision, Jane Dean survey. A dash one five nine, Park Lane.
This is the actual.
I make the motion to approve agenda item thirty-two, as per.
Second.
Moving, saying it all, favorite raise your hand. Thirty-three, discuss and take action on Darsha Enterprises Incorporated. Request for grants to onsite survey facility regulations on Walker County. Regarding permit number twenty twenty dash zero zero one one.
Seven one back.
Yes.
It's, yeah, this is on the store out there.
Still on the store on nineteen. You guys will remember, this has come four quarter a couple of times, uh, the variants that they're requesting here. Not for the disposal area itself. When they're treating the way, their plan is to treat the wastewater at the side of the creek. They need to pipe it across to the disposal field.
Yeah.
And the code doesn't have a methodology specifically for crossing a creek. Requires variance, it does have a methodology for crossing drain. So they're proposing basically essentially to use that methodology with some additional protocol, they're burying it a little bit deeper. They're putting uh, cemented by sand over the top of it to protect it. Then they're basically gonna take the. Affluent line from the tree to wastewater under and up the other side, and then use that to. Suppose of the wastewater on the opposite side, so they can use their entire land.
It's got a casing and all.
Yeah, everything will be as, as they.
We need a grand set of subdivision posts.
This is a, this is a, this is a state rule. State needs to address it.
Okay.
Um, it's a state rule, uh, that, and it almost. Almost automatically triggers the grants anytime you make crosses of green.
Well, and they don't. I'm assuming they. Don't have any other option.
No, not, not if they wanna use that land.
Yeah.
It's on the other side, I mean, that's.
Everything else is already.
Wrong route to give them. I'll have to cross it somewhere to get inside of it.
I make the motion to approve agenda thirty-three.
My second.
Moving, saying it all, favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thirty-four, discuss and take action on Ronnie Romero's request for waiver of variance. Or, or request fees for plat number twenty twenty-three dash zero four four replat of lots fifteen through seventeen. Lot two, section one of the Wildwood Shore subdivision, George W. Robinson survey, A dash four five four Oakland Court.
So.
Good morning.
I'm Ronnie Romero. And I'm just asking for the um. The waiver of the fee and stuff, but it's these private roads that were. Basically maintained and repaired by the Wildwood Shores Property Owners Association, which is funded by the property owners. So Walker County doesn't have anything to do with any of the repairs. And we're regulated by the ordinance of the Wildwood Shore subdivision, which is thirty foot. Not thirty-five. So given. The county five foot that. You know, takes away from me, so I'm just asking for the waiver. Of the fee also.
So it's a, it's a private subdivision, a private road, she's requesting to leave, essentially leave the right of way the way it was. Plated. Leave the utilities right of way the way they were when they originally plotted, not. Not moving back. To meet the new, the new policy. Um, she wants to replat using the ori- original right of way, it's a private road. You're familiar with. The uh, the request for the waiver is that. Um, she's, she's applying for the variant, but it feels like that the fee. Um. Doesn't really accomplish any purposes, in fact, and she's. Got an existing plat with an existing right of way, she would be the only kick out. It's out, um, an extra five foot in front of her home. There's two items here, the first one. Is the waiver and the second one is.
Benny, what's the fee amount for that?
Two hundred dollars.
Two hundred dollars.
So, but what have we been doing with everybody else? Maybe, I mean, we have one of these on there, just standing there, of course.
Yeah.
Yeah, um. You guys have granted waivers for fees before. Um. And some people have paid the fees, and Wildwood Shore specifically, I don't have a tally of what you guys have done in Wildwood, Jerry.
Yeah. I know we generally don't waive. Fees, because then we have to, if we do. We had to have to have established some sort of. By, uh, what, how we say, all encompassing criteria, what, you know, what qualifies for a fee waiver, what does not qualify for fee waivers, I don't wanna. Say. Miss Romero, yes, we should do you, and then Mr. Johnson, no, we can't waive you. Um, behind that, so barring us having some kind of protocol in place, generally, I'd, I'd have to be against it. But I'm not saying that in Wildwood Shores. Maybe we look at that subdivision in general.
Well, we, we, we are, we anticipate probably when we come back for some rule updates. Coming out in the year.
Yeah.
Uh. Having the court discuss. A, uh, adding to the requirements on existing subdivisions, you may want to add some requirements on existing subdivisions. That you'll accept right of way alignments and you, and easement alignments as required in the original subdivision, that could be something that. The court could discuss often in the, in the future.
Yeah.
Yeah, I always look, what do we do to that fee anyway? What do we actually do for the fee that we're charging? So.
We take.
So it's in your internal office, right?
Take it in, we review it, we bring it before you guys, put it on the agenda and have this here. The, 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 depending on the type of variance, the amount of review that's required. This would be, I would consider a, a.
Very minor.
Bottom of that, of the.
I'll leave it up to you, Brian.
Well, let's just see where it goes, I'm gonna make a motion, we approve the request for waiver. Uh, on the fees.
I'll second that.
Moving, seconded all, favor, raise your hand.
We're gonna tell the next.
All opposed.
I'm opposed, I'm gonna make a note, when the next guy comes and asks for his waiver, we're gonna have a hard time telling him no. So who do you tell yes to?
You wouldn't raise.
I tell Jacob. He said the one to waive a whole subdivision, what, what are we gonna tell him? I don't think that was a good conversation.
I am, I'm gonna say we had different mothers, my mother had no trouble telling me that.
Yeah, thirty-five, discuss and take action on Ronnie Romero's request for variance in section. B point, B four point six slash B four point one of the Walker County subdivision regulations regarding private street right of way plat. Number twenty twenty-three dash zero four four replat of lots fifteen through seventeen, block two, section one of the Wildwood Shore subdivision. George W. Robinson survey, A dash four five four.
This is the actual variance itself, the request, um. The associated right of way not to have to be set back beyond the original limits.
Yeah, that's only right to leave it like it was, because if you don't. Change the whole makeup of the whole.
It is situational, there could be situations where there's a, a need that, that is in place, but I don't have any objection.
So I, I would, I would say that. Wildwood Shores, like I said, we do have one every couple of, every couple of meetings, we have one here. If that subdivision in every lot is subject to that same thing, if they do something with it, then let's. Bring something back that says, we're gonna pick out, whether it's Wildwood Shores or whatever. Quickly, this one here in particular, because it's all thirty foot, and everybody, we're gonna tell everybody the same thing, so. If we can pass apologies just for Wildwood Shores. Quickly, I feel a bit better.
Existing subdivisions or.
Just Wildwood Shores.
Yeah.
Because it was, yeah, we don't wanna research the whole.
Put whatever, you know, on the agenda, and it'll be up.
Yeah, I mean, where are y'all with that? I mean, that.
Yes, that's good.
Okay.
Yeah, you, you're not changing anything in there anyhow.
Never, never do.
I'll make a motion to approve item thirty-five as presented.
But.
Moving, seconded all, favor, raise your hand.
I'm sorry, I'm up, no way.
Okay, all opposed. Quarter one. Thirty-six, discuss and take action on Peak Creek Texas LLC request. Thirty-six, discuss and take action on Peach Creek, Texas LLC request for variance to section three of the Walker County subdivision regulations regarding. Assignment transfer of plant, plat application, plat number twenty twenty-two. Dash zero three seven submitted in twenty twenty-two to ano- to another entry. Within thirty-six months of the original supplemental date. For the proposed Peach Creek Forest subdivision Jose Maria Marina de la Garza A dash twenty-two.
So thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, elder has requested that these be moved into the. My recommendation to the commissioner of courts would be, I mean, you guys, if you want to just open, open them up and discuss them. But my recommendation would be that you deny the variances and leave the, or open for him to bring them back. Uh, next commissioner's court. Um, I'll, if you're not going to, um, allow them to bring them back, I, I would recommend that you deny them, but. The cleanest way on variance is if you're going to allow somebody to bring them back in is to just deny them and allow them to bring them back to next commissioner's court. So we require you to open up each one of them and deny them, but. Nothing keeping you from talking about it. It's on the agenda. He's just requested that these be postponed. Allow for.
Um. You know. We're talking about trying to transfer this to another entity. And postpone and, and make that good for thirty-six months. I've just. I can't go along with this. I don't agree with it. Don't think it's a great idea. We got deer forced in the ring whenever the original piece of property was built. They had to resubmit under a different name. I just don't like this at all. I think it's.
Let's read them and deny them. Uh, read them, read them.
Bring them back.
I thought you wanted to discuss it.
Yeah, go ahead. I like to listen to you anyway.
I'm done. I'm sure. Move for denial.
Second on that. No, just, uh, well, he'd be able to bring it back. Yes, absolutely. Yeah, they need to be able to bring it back. So that needs to be part of your motion, so.
So with the ability to bring it back.
Yeah.
Set up.
Yeah.
Court, future court.
That's what I'm saying.
You got all that? Okay, moving, saying it all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thirty-seven, discuss and take action on Peach Creek, Texas LLC request for variance to section. B three point four point two of the Walker County subdivision vision regulations regarding requirements for two fire apparatus roads. For the proposed Peach Creek Forest subdivision Jose Marina de la Garza A twenty-two.
This variance has to do with the distance between the two roads and we have a specific requirement.
Correct, and you know, something was brought to my attention, uh. This also needs to meet through the fire marshal's office through our E S D. And we need to have, I don't, we need to have some kind of a, a way for when you receive a plat that that goes to the fire. Fire marshal's office for review.
That's for sure. It's not gonna happen.
Urgency service district fire marshal's authority, they're spelled out quite specifically in health and safety code. I'm not aware of. Any reason. That the economic development, planning and development office of the county. Has any kind of duty. To send that to the E S D fire marshal. Nor do I believe that the E S D fire marshal is in any position to comment. On the planning and development of the county. Based on the claim of the authority of the fire marshal. It's spelled out quite clearly what's in there. Now, anticipating the response back from the E S D fire marshal, it's gonna be about. That development provide appropriate access. For emergency vehicles to get in and out in responding to a fire. That's a duty and responsibility of the county when approving plaits and developments. And it doesn't. I, and I see no legal basis for that. My advice to the court is not to take that action.
So right now.
Yeah, I would, uh. I'd like to hear from the other side or two, what their thoughts are, but we do have our legal opinion from our lawyer.
Well.
Maybe that's something I'll, they can, they'll investigate that, I guess, from the other side.
Yeah.
They're sitting in the room here.
Yeah, I see them. I'm looking at them.
Jimmy's living on a burst in that degree. I can, um, I can tell you that. Under seven seventy-five, uh, the health and safety code, the E S D does have the authority. To enact a fire code and to enforce it. They have those powers and duties. Uh, E S Ds across the state are reviewing plans, they're reviewing building plans. They're doing inspections. These all fall under the purview of the, the E S D. The issue really is if we don't do this, we could give someone an indication that their project may go forward. And I can give a recent example is if it goes forward and it doesn't meet the requirements for the E S D. Then they may get into that project and realize that they've made a mistake. They have to do additional work. Um, a, a recent example of a store being built in county. Uh, they weren't going to bring the sufficient water line. They happened to do their due diligence. They contacted the E S D. They found out that they were fixing to make a mistake. It was gonna cost them some money. Yes, they had a development plan and they had approval. But without that communication between us, it can create a problem for our developers. You know, unforeseen requirements, they're not ready for that. Uh, or they have to do something more to get it to where they can build on those properties. So. Um, this particular example is a good example. Uh, the E S D fire code pretty much mirrors the county subdivision regulations for the second access room. We just had a major fire, uh, a named fire right that are adjacent to that property on Peach Creek. Several, I think seven hundred homes, we're topping about, possibly down one road, one way in, one way out. Uh, that's why it's in the, it's in the subdivision codes and the E S D fire code. Um, we can work together. This is a way to do it. Kind of make it a little bit easier. I think most of our developers would agree that they just want to know what the regulations are. Going forward, once they know what those regulations are, then they can determine what they want. They don't want to find out halfway through. That they only meant part of the regulation. That's what we're kind of looking for. It's a way to kind of keep that going, make it easy, a one stop shop. Something like that.
Based on our district attorney's comment, we have a one stop shop. He's sitting right here. That's what we do. We didn't tell, I mean, that, that's a, a conversation that you guys are gonna have to have some sort of legal thing. Brought to us that satisfies our D A. So, I mean, even the example of this, of the store. You know, did they have enough water going to the store? Do we regulate that really? And we really don't. So he could have built his store.
But the E S D does.
But we don't. So he's building in the county and that goes back now from the ground up and that makes me where it changes.
I have, well, we have attorney general's opinion that says the E S D has the right to do that.
Well, then you have to get with our district attorney and convince him. Till he, until he pulls the trigger on us and says, hey, y'all work with this E S D. And, and the fire marshal, then we don't.
Uh, uh, I'll just say this, I think coordination is very important. I agree with Jimmy on that. It's very important. For everybody involved in the project, um, maybe seeking what, what, to what lengths we can coordinate legally. Be something that, task that could be assigned, but I can't do anything without.
Absolutely.
So.
Yeah, and we all need to be working together for the benefit of the county and the developers. So we're not fighting amongst each other, you know, but.
And to that point, uh, in no way is our office opposed to coordination. What we are saying is that the final determination, the decision. Let vest entirely with the county and not the E S D. They can't tell the county what the county can and can't do. So if they want to, I believe Andy has shared with me before that he indicates to developers. You need to comply with all the regulations that are gonna apply to where you're doing your development. But here in the county, with the, with Walker County, this is what we're doing. And there are some other authorities, E S D has some authorities. I'm not disputing that. Then that developer will need to consult with the E S D and make sure that they are in compliance with the E S D. As well as they are with the council. But the idea. And it could be, you don't get tone in an email. But when I see emails that appear to say. The county must forward the plans to them for their review before the county can take action. I'll get that. Says, and I'm familiar with the A G and then that's not what it says either. My opinion. So. If, if there's a way to coordinate between the E S D fire marshal and the planning and development office, do it. But the county has the final authority to grant. To approve, to disapprove, to whatever on these, of these developments. And that's the line that I'm trying to draw very clearly here. But it doesn't have to go to E S D there. Based on issue, they want to share that with the developer, they should. Because one thing they want is everybody to have fire safety, emergency safety. So that's, that's what I'm trying to emphasize here.
Yeah.
Listen, I totally agree with what Quentin's saying back there, but the reality of the two is with my opinion.
Don't mind out there. I don't.
It's, we do need to work together.
Yeah.
And what authority, Jimmy? I mean, just, just say we have somebody comes to us and they don't come see y'all and they put some lines in that's not correct. What authority do y'all have to make them fix it?
Um.
Is there anything there for that?
The E S D can, um, they can do an inspection, they can issue a fire marshal's order. It requires it to be corrected. Um, it goes so far as to, it's a class D misdemeanor in disregard the, the fire marshal's order. So. It can get to the point where now they're gonna have a building that doesn't comply. It's going to be, can they operate it legally? Not really, uh, because they're under fire marshal's order not to, um.
See, that's what we don't, we don't want to cause that problem.
It's gonna cause a lot, and agree. What we're saying here is we're not. And it may be if, if it's a tone of the email of an issue, maybe we need to work together. We're not saying that one is subservient to another. What we want to do is we want to have a seat at the table so we can make it easier. Uh, one of the things that I'm familiar with, we've done it before in other places, is a one stop shop where you can go in there. And you can essentially, you know that when you come out with that development permit. Everybody's on the same page and we don't have any hiccups going forward. I think we can work that where we cooperate with each other. And we're not saying that, we're not demanding that the plans come here. If the plans don't come and we don't see them until after a development permit is granted. Then we'll have to deal with that. Then they're gonna have to come back to court at some point in time and maybe say, we had to make some changes. We had to add a second road.
Uh, that part is true. If they change the development that they're doing before other. Would have to update.
They had to come back. Well, I think what we're looking for is just a way that we can make it simple. And where we know it and we're all on the same page and we have a process that we can trust. Uh, and it's similar from my understanding, it's similar to, uh, areas that, that are done in the city of Huntsville's E T J. Uh, they have, you have a similar process like that. Do they have to look at it or do they look at it and give you input before you develop?
In the E T J, we have a, an agreement that the city reviews for subdivision requirements. Before we issue permits in the E T J, we get what's called strategic compliance. Basically is their review of the subdivision regulations since we're not enforcing subdivision regulations. They are. Uh, we, we have that agreement, but that's a place where it's, it's, it's a power that the county had. We made an agreement. With the city, uh, on who was gonna enforce in what areas.
A very bad agreement. Let me just go and point that out for you.
Yeah. And maybe that's a similar way. If we can do some sort of agreement where we look at it. We, we don't want to enforce the county subdivision regulation. That's the county's job. Certainly that's something that. What we want to do is to make sure that there isn't a misstep during that part. We have to come back to a developer and say, now you've got to go back and you, you've already gotten all these approvals, but we didn't do this. Now we have to start all these plans coming back before. And it's, it's gonna make us all look a little foolish or, you know, it's gonna create problems for our developers. Maybe a similar process was done there and not where we. Approve it, so to speak, but at least we say, hey, this, this is, this submission. Will comply going forward, gives us a starting point. Then as they start adding buildings, we don't get caught later on. We could conceivably go along to the point of, all of a sudden, we realize there's a commercial building being built out there. And it doesn't meet. Now, how did it get there? Now, because essentially the dev- the development permit, and I've seen the development permit, is not a building permit. It's a, correct me if I'm wrong, i- it's a development permit. So. When you start to build that building.
The only vertical construction that we really look at is foundations related to flood plan.
That's it.
The concern is, is when we get to that point where we're building. Uh, part of the development permit is also infrastructure. So infrastructure support those buildings. We're gonna, we're a hot, we're a hot county. South has been bought out and developed through it net, starting in our end of the county and it's coming to the north end of the county pretty quick. We'll get one chance to develop it right. Yeah. Only one chance. And, and if we blow it, future. Courts and department heads will be dealing with that. I've seen this before. Once you get going down that road, they're going to come and develop in this commu- in this community. We get one chance to do it right. And that's working together. I think we can, we've, that's why we adopted a fire code down there. So that we don't end up with something that twenty years from now, a future court is trying to fix a bunch of safety issues. So.
I think we all want to work together, huh? Uh, I don't know whether we need to put on a workshop and get y'all up here. And try to come up with a solution between the court and Andy's office and E S D.
That's what I, I don't know about.
So we can all get in the same room and talk about.
E S D has never tried to dictate. We, what we want to do is just try, and if it came off that way in the email, that's not the way it should have come off. I'd like to see maybe a, a, a working group like that to come up with a policy. We can bring that back to the court. We're all comfortable.
Or, yes, if y'all want to just put together something and go through Brandon and bring it back to court or. Jacob, you got any ideas? I know you do.
You know, I was not. What my private job is. There's nothing, no, I, I do concur with you and we talked about this before. We're not saying we won't stop any kind of development or anything like that. We would like to be put on this. I'm gonna speak as a developer. Whenever I come to Andy, I have to submit against something from Bluebonnet. How many times have we heard that up here about water, weather? How many wells there are? We have to have text out permits. We have to have, uh, environmental, what's the environmental study? If there's any sewage, we have to buy all. And there are no objections, letter of no objections. We have to have an opinion from Bluebonnet. The fire marshal's office should be, in my opinion, be put on that. Now, if we say, hey, don't do this and the court. Issues it, it's on court then. But there is a, is a letter, just like you all go against Bluebonnet and say. This eight hundred well subdivision, you'll win. Y'all can let that happen. I'm not gonna disagree with that. But you have a letter objecting to that saying that you shouldn't. So all I, in my opinion. Going against the, you know, the fire marshal, they, they review stuff and they're, because there's a lot of stuff happening already. You know, they've got, we had some actual, what do you call it? Apartment complex. They call it down, it's out in the middle of nowhere. I mean, if they're gonna put a apartment complex in, there needs to be some, we don't want to end up like there are these other counties that have these big apartment complexes with no firewalls, no. No sprinkler systems, no life safety facilities whatsoever. So there was a reason this was put in place. Now, if the county says, nope. We're gonna give you a variance to that. Then that's on y'all. But it won't be on our office. It ain't, it's just no different than Bluebonnet. Go there from the textile. If you issue a build permit and they don't have a textile permit. I mean, that's, that's only counted. So, anyway, that's just my opinion.
To be honest, that's the simple solution. You just, and Andy's office has already indicated to me that they do that. They ask the developer, have you checked with all. Of the various authorities you need to check with. And, and he asks for that kind of documentation. That's all they need to do with the E S D fire marshal as well. So now the developer knows if I'm developing, if I'm developing an E S D. Then I need to consult with that fire marshal as I'm doing my plan before I turn it in to the Walker County Planning and Development Office. And the big distinction that, that he made that's really key for me is we do subdivisions. The, the subdivision of the land, they do the buildings that are built on that land legally. They're two different things. And so I, I don't want. Bluebonnet or E S D fire marshal or any other entity telling the county what, how they can subdivide, subdivide land. That's where I was drawing my hard line. That, we don't have to do that. But if we want to add the E S D fire marshal, that makes perfectly good sense and that actually solves the problem.
You're, I, I agree there. The subdivision development regulation, the land used, that is entirely what this court looks at. And that's, that's one of your primary roles. I watch every one of your meetings. That's what it's about. And, uh, but when we start talking about. And, uh, but when we start talking about putting buildings on that land, having that infrastructure, whatever y'all wanna do, I can help, I work with, with, I, I do this for a living, I can work with Andy. We can come up with a process where we have a le- a, a letter of no objection, it's most commercial developments and even residential subdivisions that are very quick review, we can do that. And then we can.
So, what was that view, Quentin?
And maybe Andy, can, how do we put that process? Yeah, let's, let's come back to thirty-seven, Brandon.
He just said, it, this needs to be on the checklist, if, if somebody's developing in that part of the county, it should be on the checklist so that.
Andy, put that on the checklist.
You need to check the E S D fire marshal about your plans. They, then they can put that, the letter of no objection or their letter of concern, they can submit to Andy's office. That's all that needs to happen there, because what the developer does of their land later on is, it, it matters, but it's not what you're concerned.
Right.
From there, so.
But back, back to number thirty-seven, let, let's go back to thirty-seven.
Yeah, I, I would say, we, we probably should workshop this under a, under an agenda item.
Yeah.
We'll work on that, thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven, move to, um, deny the variance to be available to bring back to court.
Second.
All right, moving seconded on, favorite raised your hand.
Thank you, Jim.
I apologize for the rapid.
No, you're good.
Thank you for bringing us back.
We'll, we'll bring you back out to the bottom, thirty-eight. Discuss and take action on Peach Creek, Texas LLC request for variance to section B two point one and B two point four of the Walker County subdivision regulations regarding minimum lot frontage and minimum lot depth average for the proposed Peach Creek Forest subdivision, Jose Marina de la Garza, A dash twenty-two.
Move to deny or building, bring back to court.
Second.
Moving seconded on, favorite raised your hand. Motion carries. No executive session, any public comments? Questions from the media, wait.
I'd be here.
The mission is clear, we wanna put a workshop on for Andy and developers and fire marshals. All right, we'll put that on the next agenda.